It's May 3, 2022. It is 7:00 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mark, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just as a reminder, please turn your cell phones off. Go call, please. McKeever?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Wireball?
Here.
Potter?
Here.
Sheriff Gadsden?
Spiegel?
Here.
Young?
Here.
All right, before you, you have the minutes from the April 19, 2022 meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept.
We have a motion from Mark by a second.
Second.
A second by Breton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Granting permission for a poll to speak?
Vicki Deschawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, Bussaras. At the April 5, 2022 council meeting, an email from Brittany Wireball, daughter of councilperson Dan Wireball, was read. In her email, Wireball named me and two other individuals as being, and I quote, "aggressive, harassing, and on a power trip to exacerbate some sort of superfluous superiority complex." End of quote. She further stated that I belittled and berated countless officials to the point of resignation. I am unaware of any officials that have resigned because of me. I hereby request that Wireball supply me and council with the names of these alleged countless officials to support her accusation. I am aware of the resignation of former council clerk Rebecca Warren. However, Warren stated in her resignation letter to Bussaras City Council and Administration the following, and I quote, "I regret to inform you that I am choosing to resign for multiple reasons." Warren identified her reasons in the following order. First, did not feel she received respect from a select few council members. Second, did not feel she received respect from the current council president. And third, felt she had been publicly harassed by a member of the public. The rules of procedure for Bussaras City Council state that it shall be the duty of the president of council to see that all rules are enforced. The rules of procedure state that all letters of correspondence that are submitted to council for presentation must include the name and address of the author in order to be read at a public council meeting. Wireball's email did not contain her address. The rules of procedure do not allow a person to make personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks. There were nine such remarks in Wireball's email. By allowing the reading of Wireball's email, which did not follow the rules of procedure, President Vermillion did not carry out her duty of enforcing all rules. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Police Chief Neil Ostenheimer, I've got my annual report for 2021. And before I begin...
Do you want to wait for reporter city officials?
I can do that if you'd like. I wasn't sure when I should go. I think last time I wrote up participations.
Oh, okay. Well, we've got you under reporter city officials.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, any communications or petitions?
No.
Standing committee reports, plating? Public lands and buildings?
Oh, no report. Am I the backup for her? Okay, I thought so. No report.
Okay. Safety?
No report, Madam President.
Finance?
No report.
Economic development?
No report.
Service?
No report.
Traffic Commission?
Nothing to report.
Yes, sir.
Traffic Commission?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The alley behind Tim Hortons?
Right. We discussed it at the traffic commission.
Okay, has there been any...
We're still working on it. We're still working on it.
Okay, that...
As long as you're making progress on it...
We're going to have another meeting announced here pretty quickly.
Because the gentleman who brought it up is...
We've discussed it.
Becoming impatient, which I understand is frustrating.
Well, there's, you know, there's issues with every alley. I mean, so there's, there is a possible solution to that that we're working on.
Sure.
But, you know, how that relates to every alley then in the city, you know, there is, every alley you cross, there is potential, yeah. And that one has a little bit more traffic than most alleys because of the business, so...
That's the main concern.
We're working on it, but we're working, we obviously can't put a light there or anything or stop sign, but there's one other option we're working on right now, which we'll talk about the next meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You have a report before you, Brown?
Mary, sir.
Already?
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you, Madam President. Safety Service Director Wagner and I attended the Legion banquet last about a week, that's about 10 days ago now, celebrating the 100th anniversary of the American Legion in Bussaras. And as always, it's an honor to be invited and be in attendance with so many who unselfishly served our country. They also, something that's overlooked from the Legion, they not only take care of veterans, they take care of their community too. They're very community-minded and do so much for us here. We celebrated Arbor Day last week. Maybe some of you saw the article that was in the Telegraph forum. And that was the sixth time that we've celebrated here in Bussaras. But it was the 150th anniversary celebration of the first Arbor Day, which was held in Nebraska. They celebrated that Arbor Day and they planted, John may correct me if I'm wrong there, but I think it said a million trees in Nebraska. Next week, our tree commission members, of which John is a member, will travel to Findlay to receive the prestigious Tree City USA Award for the fifth time for Bussaras. This award shows that our community is serious about managing our tree canopy and will pay future dividends. The $2 investment per resident pays off exponentially and property value increases, energy savings, also reduces stormwater runoff. And not only that, provides beauty to our city. Celebration began at the elementary school. We planted a honey locust and the students there helped us, about a dozen students helped us. We continued, planted a scarlet oak on Redmond Way. And we had a very large group of student council members there from the middle school and the high school who are extremely knowledgeable about the effects that trees have on the environment. Anyway, we were very pleased with the students. If you have students in this school system, they should be very proud of them. I also met with our new partnership director, David Zack, and we discussed the issues facing Bussaras and Crawford County. Mr. Zack is very knowledgeable about economic development. He has tremendous enthusiasm. If some of you know him, maybe you know that already. I did not know him. I was quite impressed with him. And we look forward to developing a close relationship. He'll be on the job in late May, and I've invited him to come to a council meeting. And he will do that very, very soon. After he gets on, gets under, feet under him, I guess is what I'm trying to use. And finally, we lost a very sweet person. A very sweet community member. Not many of us can be described as sweet, right? But this lady was a sweet lady. I talked to her many times and she did so much for the city. And her name was Carolyn Ann Smith. She actually was in charge of the Christmas parade for many, many years, among other things that she did. And she couldn't get out of her apartment later in life, but she did it by phone and lined up an immense number of floats until she couldn't do it anymore. Mayor Moore actually had a proclaimed Carolyn Ann Smith Day back, I think it was 2013, so our sympathy goes out to her family and she will be missed. That's all I have tonight. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Anybody have a question for Mayor?
Yes. I got a text from a person who lives on Oak Ridge Drive. They're obtaining a petition
Okay.
about the water issue that they are, he has 13 properties already have signed. They have a serious problem with the rain, water runoff.
Okay.
And he wants to know if the city is able to...
We could talk.
Yeah.
You're talking about providing water? You're talking about providing water?
No. Stormwater.
Stormwater. Oak Ridge. Oak Ridge is...
Off of Wetstone, but north, south of...
Oak Ridge, okay. Okay, is it, is it right off of Beal? Yeah.
It's just north of Beal.
Yeah, okay.
All 19.
Right. That was in the design. Now, we've had comments on that for years. It's...
They had trouble this year? Yeah.
Yes. They've had a lot of trouble.
They have over the years, but, you know, I'm not sure that's a city issue. You know, we've talked about that. It was in the design of the subdivision and, you know, they've got mounding of dirt there and the dirt, you know...
I understand. I'm just, they're wanting to see if there's a way that we can somehow address that with either the person who developed that area or whatever we need to...
Well, there will be costs. I mean, is it fair to the city taxpayers to pay for something that was maybe, you know...
Well, that's what I'm saying, if there's something we can look at. You know, I don't know what the answer is.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll look at it again and see. I know we just had something here, what, a month ago, I think we responded to. So about that, said that was not the city's issue, so...
Okay, well, they're, they're, they are feeling the same as what did the Timken subdivision was feeling with the backup.
Yeah, right.
So...
Well, that's two different things.
Correct, that's two different things, but...
And we are, there's things we are doing about Timken subdivision, which is removing stormwater from, from the system, from the sanitary sewer there. That's, that's what we're working on with the residents right now.
Right, but I'm just saying, they're, they're feeling the same frustration as they are.
Understand.
So...
But they're not getting water in their basement. They're talking about water in their backyards, right?
Yeah.
Okay, there's a difference there, I think.
Correct, it's not, it's not, they did not say there was water in the basement.
I understand.
They're saying that it's in their yard.
Yeah, I'm not sure what can be done there, to be honest with you. We can look into, we'll look into it again, though.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Can I hear Mayor?
Service Director, I'm ready for Jeff's. We've got some referrals. The heating system for the water treatment plant to public lands and buildings. Also, Crowder Road Park, which property we own, to public lands and buildings. We have Highland Avenue/Reed Street property to public lands and buildings. And solid waste replacement fund to finance. Okay? And then we have Woodland Avenue Project. We had board of control for that and we accepted RMH's bid. It was slightly under budget, which was good news. Reversing a trend which we've had, most of them have been over budget. For the Arrowhead Project, Arrowhead Drive Project was also a little bit under budget, same contractor as RMH, we awarded that. Pre-con meeting will be held next Wednesday, May 11, at 6:00 PM in council chambers. As for the Woodland Arrowhead Project, just what we discussed there. So we're asking the residents to come in as we've done for previous projects in that area. And we'll let them know what's going on, answer their questions. They will be getting letters in the next day or so.
They got them today.
They got them today? Great, okay. The Nevada Waterline Project continues. Had another meeting with those folks. And we've also have been meeting with the residents along the Winford-Nevada Road. We have another meeting tomorrow night for that, for easement approval. Memorial Day is a month off, but not, not too soon to think about trash pickup. It'll be the standard operating procedure. And we will prick up Monday's trash on Tuesday. Summer Park help is still needed. Get an application up at the office here, Mayor's Office. Same with lifeguards. We still need some lifeguards. We brought up Timken subdivision a few minutes ago. And on Wednesday, May 18, at 9:00 AM, we will be visiting the Timken subdivision. And those folks are going to be getting their letters here the next day or so. We've asked them to remove their downspouts and sump pumps from the sewer drains to help alleviate some of the backup issues we've had last year. So they'll, folks, those folks will be getting a letter. This is cleanup week. We announced that. It's been on our website. Just to remind you, you are permitted up to 12 bags of garbage. And that's it for Jeff's report. Any questions for Jeff?
Right here.
Yes, sir.
Would it be possible, when we're sending letters out, that we could be copied on those?
Oh, sure.
The reason I ask is, and I know that the Arrowhead people got their letter today because I got a phone call.
Okay.
They just had a few questions about it. I said, well, I didn't even know there was a letter that went out, so...
We traditionally have them, but we're happy to do that.
Yeah, I'm not saying we need to be the ones to answer your questions for you, but just, you know, so that I know what the heck they even saw to say, well, we should talk to the mayor's office about that.
That's a good idea.
It'd be nice if we could be CC on those. And they could be emailed to us. You don't need to mail them to us.
Oh, yeah, that's a great idea.
You know, the same thing, I guess, for Timken subdivision. You get your man letters out there. It'd just be nice to know what these people are being told. So if we're asked, you know, whether we're at the grocery store and somebody wants to have a conversation with us, it'd be nice to be a little bit more in the know.
Check, check your email tomorrow.
Thank you.
I'll make sure that gets there. That's an excellent suggestion.
Next question?
Yes?
Mayor, when does, you said about the Nevada Waterline. What's the status on the, if the water line running to Solpher Springs, do you know?
It's, hopefully, we're going to go out to bid on that in, later in the year. Yeah, later in the year.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, Law Director?
Sorry, real quick. These are part of service. Jeff put them in there just for, the annual reports for everybody.
Oh, okay, I apologize. In your packets?
Yep, everybody should have it. It's just the annual reports for...
I think you said the city official, or city officers, I think. It's the water distribution, wastewater, police department, fire department, utilities department, engineering department, water department, and from the service department. So those are all for, for results.
I'd like to make a motion to accept and file all annual reports.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam President, just as a point in order, just since this is Megan's first year doing that, when we accept and file them, that means they need to be put in the permanent folder with today's meeting, is all that means.
Okay, well, you mean like in the, just filing cabinet for, what do you mean?
Yeah, they, they get made part of the permanent record of today's meeting.
Oh, okay, okay.
So I just thought you didn't know that since this is your first year having those.
Thank you, sir. Anytime we do an acceptance and file, regardless of what it is.
Do we have to make a motion to refer those, for paragraph?
We should.
Of the safety service director's report. So I have a referral for the heating system at the water treatment plant to public lands and buildings. Do we want to do it all as one?
Yeah.
Crowder Road Shrine Park to public lands and buildings. Highland Avenue Reed Street property to public lands and buildings. And solid waste replacement fund to finance.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Those were collective room, Kevin and Terry, right?
Yes. All right. Now you can speak.
Thank you. I just have the same thing. So I need a referral for settlement discussions of Deschawn versus City of Desires to finance committee. And also after we go through all the legislation, I'd like to move to go into executive session and just, just independent litigation.
You said Deschawn versus Bussaras to finance?
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any, anybody else have anything? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And you want, if you want to executive session at the end of tonight?
Yeah. All done, finished, business, and we're done, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, Honor Schiffer.
Thank you, Madam President. You have the revenue tab to budget and you have statement of acquisition for the end of April. And I gave you a new page for the gross revenues or income tax. And I just wanted to call your attention to, to this. The first section at the top is just comparing each month to the same month last year and how those revenues played out. So April wasn't, wasn't bad. We thought actually we did pretty well. But we didn't do as well as last year because we had a $300,000 estimated payment from a business last year that, of course, we did not get this year. And in May last year, May 15 was actually the due date for tax returns. So May was a good year. So we're down this month. We do not have a deadline in May, so I don't know what May's going to look like. But it looks like things could be dropping significantly, you know, throughout the rest of the year. At the bottom, we have year-to-date numbers, month over month. And I also added the amount of refunds that we had issued for 2020, 2021, and so far this year. So you see, in, in 2020, refunds were $221,660, basically. In '21, it was only $124,592. This year, we're already, after four months, at $189,658.30, 36 cents. That is due to people working from home for COVID. And they may be in the office maybe a day or so a week, but their, their employers have calculated for them whether they were in the office 10% of the year, 20%, whatever. So in a lot of cases, these people received 90% of their withholdings to the city back this year. I had budgeted $200,000 for refunds total this year and we're already at that $189. So I'll be asking tonight for more appropriations because we have more refunds coming in. But I just wanted you to be aware of that hit to our revenue. There's some other things that may be impacting us. We don't have a crystal ball, so we're going to have to watch things very closely. But I just wanted to make you aware of that. And I do have referrals this evening. I need to refer several appropriations in the general fund for donations made to the police department in the amount of $5,051.49. These donations came through the community foundation, $4,931.49 for Safety Town and private donations of $120 for the K-9 program. I also need to refer a reappropriation to the police department capital outlay from a prior year purchase order that was closed in the amount of $9,925. The chief asked that this appropriation be put in the new vehicle line to start saving for another cruiser. So this isn't new money. This is just a carryover, but we have to reappropriate. I also need to refer appropriation in the Parks and Recreation Land Fund to materials and supplies in the amount of $2,850. These are from donations made through the community foundation. $1,417 for friendship bridge maintenance and $1,433 for place gate maintenance. So these goes directly to those lines in the budget so that repairs can be made when needed. And then I just added this last paragraph today that I need to refer additional appropriations to the income tax refund lines. In the income tax fund, $50,000. The safety levy fund, $25,000. And the street fund is pretty much appropriated to the max at this point. So I want to do a transfer in the street fund from capital outlay to the refund line. This is due to some expenditures we will not be majoring this year, so we can keep that money. And again, this is due to the number of refunds issued because of employees working from home during COVID-19. And I'll have the breakdown for you on Thursday evening. And that's all I have.
Referring them to finance?
Yes, I apologize, sir.
McKeever, were you second or?
I don't know.
I was the second.
Okay, that's right.
Dan.
Dan? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Referrals are made, motion passes. Did we get a report from the treasurer?
We did.
You'd like to go into the executive session, don't you?
Do we have a motion to accept and file the treasurer's report?
So moved.
I have Terry first, Dan second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Chief Ostenheimer?
I've got the annual report for Bussaras Police Department for 2021. I would point out that it's been done for a little bit, so some of the stuff has changed since we've been moving into 2022 here from what we had in 2021. So I'm just going to go ahead and go down here just paragraph by paragraph. At the start of 2021, the Bussaras Police Department had 19 full-time officers, five full-time dispatchers, and a part-time utility person. At the start of 2022, we had 18 full-time officers, five dispatchers, and no part-time employees. During the calendar year of 2021, we handled a total of 9,261 calls for service. We experienced some personnel change in 2021. Captain Joe Greathouse retired after a long career with the Bussaras Police Department, as did dispatcher Denise Young. Captain Walker, or then Lieutenant Walker was promoted to captain to fill Joe's role. And Amos Wolfe was promoted to lieutenant. We hired Ashton Keller as a dispatcher who replaced Denise Young. In 2021, we bid have Officer Wireman and Officer Graves join the department as well. I believe Wireman was at the very end of 2020, but I don't believe I gave a report last year. And then Graves joined us in the, in 2021. We felt the national struggle to find police officers and police officer candidates. We had, I think, four testing cycles during the last year, which I believe I included in the packet there, the civil service list that we got to show the people that we ended up with on those lists. We currently have 19 officers. There's a cadet in the academy, which we've been paying for for the first time in about 20 years to try to bolster our numbers up. And we have another one that's going to start on Monday. So we'll be at the 20. But I don't want anybody to get too far excited here because we have a resignation that we got on Monday, of an officer that's leaving our department to go to Sunbury, and we're going to have one probably next month as well to go to Delaware County. So we're going to be right back at 18 and truly 16 because the two people that we, the one we have in the academy and the other one we're going to hire, won't count for manpower until well into the summer when they're trained. So like I said, it's kind of a little bit of difficult times maintaining officers and employees here. COVID-19 was a challenge in 2021 as it was in 2020. I think most of our employees had a run-in with the virus at least once during one of those two years. In spite of everything, we were unable, or we were able to provide uninterrupted police service, and I'm very grateful to all of our employees and the extra hours they put in to serve in this community. Our K-9 unit consists only of LER Bloodhound. She is with Lieutenant Wolfe and just had a nice find in rural Crawford County, I think, two nights ago, where she tracked a guy down out of a domestic. So we're very happy to hear that. We've got, last year we were awarded a grant through the Community Foundation for our K-9 unit, and we hope to be able to add a drug dog this year. And actually, that project is moving forward, hopefully very soon. We do have the cruiser outfitted for that, so we're all pretty much ready to go on adding our new drug dog. It's just going to be a matter of sending the officer to school and then getting him on the road here. We do have an ongoing fundraiser that is our plush police dogs that we have down there. They're still down there available for $20 each. And I would remind everyone that our K-9 unit is funded by grants and donations. We can, Officer Mata continues to serve in the Besarus City Schools as a school resource officer. Previously, we had had two school resource officers. There are currently no plans with our manpower status to add another one to that position, so we're going to be running with just Officer Mata for now. We still have four officers assigned to the Crawford County Special Response Team. Detective Keegan, who's also serves as the Special Response Team Commander. We have Officer Syf, Officer Shane Kramer, and Lieutenant Amos Wolfe for all members of the SRT team from the Besarus Police Department. 2021 was a return to a little bit of normalcy for us as we had our FOP Cruising with the Cops Car Show downtown, which was very nice and was well-attended. That is going on June 11th this year. So if you guys would want to turn it or bring a car up or spend some time downtown, there should be a lot of neat cars to see. It seems like it's gotten bigger every year that we've done it. So I would encourage all of you guys to be up there that day. Let's see, we have Safety Town came back to, for the Besarus School Kids this year, actually county kids. And we were happy to welcome the Bratwurst Festival back to downtown Besarus. So we got, like I said, a good, normal summer last year, and I think everybody was very appreciative of that. We had, I said some crime was up, some crime was down. I've included all the crime stats for you guys to see, but I would point out a couple of previous years that we've, and there I believe I gave those down there, and I think they're part of the packet there that you guys were given. See our vehicles? There's a data sheet on there for our frontline vehicles. We, that has, again, changed since I wrote this report. As a car 49 and 50 are on the warranty, but we have replaced cruiser number 40, 41, and 45 with the new vehicles we had down at Par. Those came on the road about three weeks ago. So that's definitely been a boost for our vehicle fleet. And as I said, with the appropriation we made and then the possibility of selling off these other cars, I'm hoping that we can get some money into the new vehicle line to maybe to add another one. We have one deadline right now with a timing chain that we may end up having to take either to Ford or somewhere else, and that probably will be an expensive fix. So the 2014s and 2015s that we still have on the road are still not in great condition there. Our goal's for 2022, to bring the department up to 20 officers. As I said, we're, we're almost there. We'll be there for probably about a week until we have our resignation. We'll be down to 19, and then more than likely down to 18 again. That's counting the person in the academy and the probationary officer that we're going to have on Monday. We did hire a dispatcher this year, so we have six full-time dispatchers, which is our, which is considered full staff for our dispatch center. I've been, since Dusty Johnson has been added on, we've had very little overtime in our civilian unit for the last couple pay periods, which is very good cost savings, I think, for the city. And we hope to continue that throughout the year. And one of our goals when I became the chief was to reach a certification through the Ohio Collaborative. On January 26th of 2021, we received certification for our, let me make sure I read it right here, Safe Policing for Safe Communities, which, just by our policy regarding use of force and the banning of chokeholds, we qualified for certification in that, that standard there. We've also received certification in the other four groups, and I'll go over those when I get to the certificates there in the back. They did release two more standards, one for mass protests and the other one for agency wellness. There's been a lot of things going on, I think, especially through the pandemic, and I think just an overall awareness of mental health and everything else for law enforcement and first responders here in the last couple of years. So that's part of where that policy is coming from on that. So in closing here for my report, I would like to encourage our citizens to have a safe 2022, and it's our privilege to continue to serve this community. The next pages here is, I can go through if you guys would like, but for the most part, it's like if you look back, it goes 2017 to 2021, which deals with traffic arrests, criminal misdemeanor arrests. Like I said, some are up and some are down. I mean, I'll, you know, if you guys want me to go through the pages, page after page.
The other packet is after. I didn't realize there was a police report in the middle. I thought he was just coming to present it. So this packet should be in your packet, too.
You guys have this page in here that's our, that's our cruiser mileage as of the date I did this, which on the Bias-Free Policing Report here, I've got January 11th. So, like I said, I can't remember the exact date that I got these numbers, but that was the miles on that date. And like I said, 40, 41, and 45 have been replaced, which is the highest mileage cars that we had in there.
Chief, if I could interrupt you. On your new vehicles, are you going to reuse those numbers or are you going to go higher numbers?
We're using, we recycle the numbers.
Okay.
So 40, or, yeah, there's, old 40 is now in the garage, and there's a new one that's got the number 40 on it. And then the same with the other two. Part of the collaborative there deals with bias-free policing. So we had, happy to, very, very happy to point out that we had zero complaints regarding our enforcement practices in 2021. There's some, there's a page on there that deals with our traffic tickets as an audit by race. And I believe that that would show pretty conclusively that we're not taking enforcement action based on race. These here are the collaborative final reports. Like I said, we have the Group One, which is recruitment and hiring and use of force. Means our policies meet the standards set by the collaborative on both of those areas. We have community engagement, body worn cameras, and telecommunications training, which again means our policies and procedures and our training warrant certification in all of those areas. The same with Part Three, which is Bias-Free Policing and Investigation of Employee Misconduct. Again, these are just reflections of our policies and our procedures as a commitment to make sure that we're achieving the highest levels that we can in those areas. And then the last one is vehicle or pursuit. So again, we have policies and procedures in place to guide our officers when they engage in those very high-risk pursuits, and that we meet the standards that the state has set down for the, for those pursuits. Okay, so the offenses, I like offenses and activity reports. I believe this one should have some highlighting on it. Okay, if you see, it says 2021 to 2020, or, yeah, 2017. If you look at some of the ones that I've highlighted, you'll see that the numbers are substantially lower now than they were in 2017. And if you go down even like the larcenies, well, those are up a little bit from 2020, but they're still down from 2017. The same with the larceny motor vehicle, which is what we, how we report on vehicle break-ins. Okay? Shoplift is just exactly that, shoplift. Those are back up again a little bit this year. The same with robberies. You'll notice that these numbers are all relatively low. You're going to have some of them. But if you go back, I went back to some of the older chief reports that I found in my office to 2014 and 2013, and those reflect the crime stats for 2012 through 2014. And I would point out that in 2012, there was 348 burglaries, reconnoitering and attempted. And there was only 41 in this year. The big thing about 2012 and 2013 is 2012 was before the Safety Forces Levy was passed. 2013 was the year the Safety Forces Levy was passed. It's when our manpower was down at very low levels, very similar to what we're going to be here right now. Okay, I mean, like I said, you don't have to take it from me. Captain, wherever he went, was working here through those times as well. Like I said, again, you go down to the 490 larcenies, 457 in 2013. These are reflections of where we're heading. The same with robberies. I believe there was only one robbery reported to us last year. We had 15 robberies in 2012 and '22 and 2013. I don't remember exactly what year it was, but I remember a woman getting her car stolen from her and thrown to the ground at Walmart, and people getting assaulted coming out of Kroger. I mean, like I said, I assume you guys have all been here long enough to remember that stuff. I know I do because I worked through it. And I would just do everything I can to encourage you guys to support the police as much as you can and not let our manpower drop down to these dangerous levels because I believe that manpower is truly the first line of defense for keeping criminals off the road. And the numbers that you have in front of you, I think, are a pretty good reflection of where we could be heading if those numbers are allowed to, to go back down and stay low. Do you have a couple of the civil service lists here? You see the January 19th of 2022? You'll see there's only three names on there. We offered the first one on the list, and he kind of ghosted us there whenever I heard from him again after we sent him a conditional offer, so obviously he doesn't work here. Reese Galitzas, the officer starting tomorrow, and Taylor Carver, the cadet we have in the academy right now, so we've been able to hire both of those. If you go through the list there, you'll see the next one only has one name on it from October 11th of 2021. And then May 17th of 2021, Noah Graves was hired, he was working as a police officer. And then the previous one is, like I said, December 16th of 2020. And Devin Wireman's the only one that was hired off of that list. So our recruiting is really in a tight spot. And one thing I would say about the people that have resigned is they specified salary and career opportunity as reasons why they were choosing to move to Delaware County area. And I would say that salary-wise, we don't compete with those agencies, and there's not nearly the people going through the Police Academy that we have out there to recruit from. So it kind of puts us in a pretty tight spot. So again, it's, I know that's a lot to kind of hear and accept, but, you know, that's the situation that we're in, is we're going to continue to lose our young officers to other agencies that pay higher wages unless we can figure out a way to become more competitive with the other competition that's out there for their services. And I think that would be all that I've, all that I've got. Does anyone have a question? All right.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. If you guys ever need me to come back up and clarify anything, just please let me know.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, you guys.
You, too, thank you. All right, you have before you, Fire Department, month-end snapshot. Do you want to accept a file?
So moved. All of them collectively, is that what you're?
All of them collectively.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I thought we already accepted.
Those were the ones that were not on the normal.
Oh, okay.
That were given to us by the SSD. These are just their actual reports.
Oh, okay.
All right. All right, any visitor input regarding the standing and special committee reports presented by city officials? Seeing none, moving on. Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
Consideration of proposed resolution number 21-2022, authorizing and directing the Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of Besarus, Ohio to ban vehicular traffic, including bicycles, except authorized emergency personnel, on Saturday, June 11th, 2022, from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., or 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. midnight on East Warren Street for the food court, from 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. midnight along Sandusky Avenue from Mary Street to Oakwood Avenue, as well as the 180, or, excuse me, 100 block Mansfield Street and Washington Square, the 100 block of East and West Renslayer Street, excuse me, the 100 block of Western Warren Street, and the 100 blocks of East and West Charles Street, respectively allowing access by local traffic and safety service personnel to the alleys located between Walnut Street and Sandusky Avenue, as well as the alleys between Poplar Street and Sandusky Avenue, in order that said streets may be utilized temporarily as a Cruising with the Cops Custom and Classic Car Show parade route for an expect, for an expected 600 custom and classic automobiles, more or less, and to provide as well sufficient parking facilities for the public display of said automobiles. Said special events be sponsored by the Paternal Order of Police. Besarus Lodge Number 68 must provide for and erect all signs to the directions, excuse me, erect all signs needed to reroute state highways according to the directions of the Service Safety Director and Chief of Police. The Service Safety Director and Chief of Police are hereby authorized to make the necessary arrangements for the rerouting of affected traffic on both federal and state highways passing through subject areas to facilitate the orderly movement of traffic during a forced time period through the City of Besarus, Ohio. Proposed ordinance number 21-2022, an ordinance accepting the petition of annexation of 0.871 acres, more or less, in Besarus Township, Crawford County, Ohio, being permanent parcel number 05-0000717.000 and 05-0000718.000 to the City of Besarus, Ohio, filed under the special procedure of annexing land with consent of all parties. Ohio Revised Code Section 709.023. Proposed resolution number two.
Those were just the two for the first readings.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. You're fine. Do I have a motion to accept those as the first readings?
So moved.
Second.
I have a first by Brenton, second by Mark. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Allowing for visitors' participation to discuss first reading of legislation.
Madam President, I have a question. Can I recite my question from here? Would you like me to go to the podium?
No, you can.
On proposed resolution 217, 2022, Mayor's no longer here.
Never mind.
I think he just stepped in there for a moment, but, okay. Do you want to?
One of the things that, well, one of the things that should be stated, and I don't know if it is, I just want to assure that somebody, we had this happen with the Bratwurst Festival in the past, somebody needs to be responsible for notifying the State of Ohio for their wide load permit holders of this. We put it in legislation for the festival starting last year. I just need to verify with his office that either the police dispatchers or his secretary, one of the two will be responsible for notifying him of that.
Okay. All right.
We had that in the last one on this, too, for the?
Yeah.
The police.
I can get with him to verify that that's, I don't know if it needs to be written in here, as long as somebody's taking care of it.
Mr. Brown?
As long as it's taken care of, we don't necessarily need to be here.
Correct.
Correct.
I'll get it later.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, moving on. Consideration of legislation being read for the second time.
Okay, proposed resolution number 216-2022, authorizing and directing the mayor and the Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of Besarus, Ohio, to enter into a contract with Crawford Murphy &amp; Tilly, Inc., A101. to enter into a contract with Crawford Murphy and Tilly, Inc., eight one oh one, North High Street, Suite one fifty, Columbus, Ohio, four three two three five, for provision of professional routine engineering services at Port Busiris Airport beginning May first, two thousand and twenty-two, and continuing thereafter for a term of five years, further authorizing and directing the city auditor to issue a warrant or warrants and the payment therefore from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations. Okay, proposed resolution number two eleven, two thousand and twenty-two, authorizing and directing the public serfi- service safety director on behalf of the city of Busiris, Ohio to enter into an agreement with the Busiris Tourism and Visitors Bureau, Inc., to promote tourism and to attract visitors and conventions to the Busiris City Area Retroactive from January first, two thousand and twenty-two, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, and also from January first, two thousand and twenty-three, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, at a cost of fifty percent of the bed tax collected pursuant to Ohio revised code section seven one seven point two zero and Ohio revised quote, Ohio revised code five seven three nine point zero nine, further authorizing and directing the Busiris City Auditor to issue a warrant or warrants from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations and payment for said services.
All right, do we have a motion to accept as a second reading?
Second.
I have a motion by Mark, second by Dan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Opportunity for visitors to speak regarding legislation read for the second time. Seeing none. Referring back to the originating committee, proposed resolution two eleven dash two thousand and twenty-two refer back to finance. Proposed resolution two sixteen dash two thousand and twenty-two refer back to finance. Proposed resolution two seventeen dash two thousand and twenty-two refer back to health and safety, and proposed ordinance twenty-one dash two thousand and twenty-two refer back to Platte. Any other public participation at this time? Seeing none. Committee report on pending legislation, proposed resolution two eleven dash two thousand and twenty-two, tourism contract, finance.
Finance is favorable, favorable to proposed resolution two eleven, two thousand and twenty-two. The tourism contract in finance is also favorable to proposed resolution two sixteen dash two thousand and twenty-two, retaining CMT as engineer.
Thank you. Proposed resolution two seventeen dash two thousand and twenty-two, cruising with the cops, health and safety.
Health and safety is favorable to proposed resolution two seventeen dash two thousand and twenty-two, street closures for cruising with the cops.
Proposed ordinance twenty dash two thousand and twenty-two, accepting the annexa-
Twenty-one.
I'm sorry. What did I say?
Twenty.
I apologize. Proposed ordinance twenty-one dash two thousand and twenty-two, accepting the annexation of eleven forty-five West Mansfield Street to Platte.
Platte is favorable to proposed ordinance twenty-one dash two thousand and twenty-two, accepting annexation of eleven forty-five West Mansfield Street, so we can maintain our law directory.
All right, do we have any old or unfinished business? All right, moving on. New miscellaneous business. The only thing that I would like to bring up is that, um, the week of, what was it, May fifteenth to the twenty-first is Light Ohio Blue Initiative. I believe you?
Well, we already have a proclamation.
Okay, all right.
It's a little bit late to get a resolution.
Right.
Uh, just found out about it, so we're gonna have a proclamation.
Okay, all right. So if you pay attention with that, that is to support our local law enforcement. All right. May I have a motion to excuse Ms. Shrock?
So moved.
Second.
Brenton? I have a motion by Mark, second by Brenton. Mo- all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have several referrals. Um, we received the liquor license application for Los Arios is now going to be Pepe's. Um, that needs to go to health and safety.
Point of order.
I apologize.
Did we get a letter on that?
Yes.
That should have been read in communications and petitions, um, probably needed to be read and be, to be referred, I would think.
Okay. Hold off on it.
Huh?
Do we hold off on it?
Do we have a copy of it here in the room?
It's in, I can go grab it. You want me to get it out of the office?
Well, that'll speed things up and let it be referred for this week. Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you wanna recess?
I think we can just sit here and, uh, wait and wait on it. We need a recess. It's next door.
And just for the record, this was my mistake, not the clerk's. Um, regarding, how do you want me to do this?
I would, I would ask that we just read it and accept and file it, and then we can refer it.
Okay. All right, we have, what is that?
Oh, that's probably not pronounced right.
Um, we have from the Ohio Department of Commerce, dear local legislative authority official, please find enclosed legislative notice that is being sent to you regarding the applied for liquor permit as captioned on the notice. You must, within thirty days from the mailed date listed on the notice under the barcode. I don't know where that's at. Um, notify the division of whether you object and want a hearing or ask for your one-time-only thirty-day extension, and requests for a one-time thirty-day extension will be reviewed by the division upon timely receipt. If granted, your additional thirty days runs from the expiration of the original thirty-day period. To be considered timely, your above response must be faxed, emailed, or mailed to the division no later than the postmarked deadline date given on the form. To speed up processing times and reduce paper, the division respectfully requests that you either fax or email your response. Please send it to, please note, the division is no longer sending ownership information with this legislative notice. If you want to know who owns the applied for permit, you can find that information two ways. You can go to a website or contact the local police department. Thank you in advance for your cooperation. This is for, um, Pepe's LLC out on Marion Road that used to be Los Arios.
Make a motion to refer that to health and safety.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to accept and file?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mark and a second by Steve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I do apologize for that. Thank you for correcting me. All right, so we have four referrals. Health and safety for the liquor license. We have, um, CHIP.
Yeah. That, Kelly just told me they have the application for it, and we have to get legislation for it. I don't have any communication for that.
That goes to economic development. Um, appointing initial regional seventeen representative to the ORF board to finance.
This was a referral that was forwarded to me from Mayor Reeser. I have all of the paperwork that came with it, but there's not really a specific letter. If I can print off the email if you need it.
I'll make a motion to send the CHIP to economic development and the regional seventeen representative to the ORF board to finance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Was that a second for both, Dan?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And nature works, where was that? Nature Works Legislation of Public Lands and Buildings? That was your request? No, you requested sewer garbage rates.
To service and finance.
To service and finance.
Is that your public lands right there?
Yes. We got this from Kelly today.
What's regarding the splash pad for Lionsfield?
What?
She mentioned a splash pad, and what did she say for Lionsfield?
Played for a grant for a splash pad for Lionsfield.
And that's what this is?
Yes.
Okay, that's the nature works. Okay, 'cause this is a resolution that she gave.
I don't know what she gave you guys, I don't know. I just know it's a.
And that needs to be, um, I believe she said it needs to be an emergency.
Public lands and buildings for emergency because the?
It has to be invited first.
Yeah, it has to be done before June first.
Doesn't it have to go to finance also, since it's money?
Yep.
Gotta go to finance also.
So public lands and buildings and finance.
I'll make a motion.
And nature works.
I'll make a motion.
As an emergency?
Yes. That would be decided in committee, not here.
Yeah, it'd be, it's a committee.
Okay. So Kevin first.
McKeever first.
I apologize.
That's okay.
And Terry, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Oh.
Nope, it's you. Go ahead.
I'd like to refer to, uh, service and finance, the sewage rates and the garbage rates. Take a look at them.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Who was the first on there?
I think Terry.
It was Terry.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm having, I'm having a Monday on a Tuesday. All right, so is that everything?
Then, uh, excuse me, then the law director have one?
Yes, his settlement discussion for Deshaun versus Busiris. Now I have that.
We are, we are.
Kevin Myers and Mark McKeever.
Yep, everything has been motioned on to be referred.
All right. All right, if that's the case, um, there it is. Okay, where's my, my wording for going into executive session?
You need a motion and a second to go into executive session at?
For pending litigation?
Pending litigation.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for pending legislation.
Litigation.
And litigation, litigation. Yeah, all that.
Potter, second.
Wait, this is happening right now?
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay.
You wanna pause?
Eight oh three PM. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in executive session at eight oh three PM.
You got, you got one little piece of business we have to take care of first.
Okay, Mike is on.
Okay, I do apologize. We are back in at eight oh four. We had a motion by Mr. Wireball, a second by Mr. Potter to go into executive session. We failed to process roll call, therefore we will do that right now.
Okay, McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrod Gadsden, Spiegel?
Yes.
And Young?
Yes.
Do you name us? We are in executive session at eight oh five. All right, we are out of executive session.
Now you need a motion to come out of.
I apologize. Any motion to come out of executive session, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? I'm sorry, we need roll call.
Oh, that's me. I'm, I'm here. Okay.
It's contagious, I'm sorry.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrod Gadsden, Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
All right, we are out of executive session at eight ten. Any other business that we need to attend to?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
I have Kevin first, Mark second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're adjourned at eight ten.